And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. We call the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting to order, June 4th. I'll ask Mr. Crupp, our Chief Budget Officer, to call the roll.
Good morning, Commissioners. We are joined this morning with Mr. Stephen Madcor from the County Council. And also to my left is Mary Rathke, our Clerk of the Board. I'll start the roll. Commissioner Bernard, here. Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Still here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Chair Ludlow?
Here. All please rise and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, reason, and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, we have a, some would say, a delightfully short agenda today, having just gone through, and we'll talk about it later, I'm sure, individually. A rather long budget process, we're happy to say. I'll just announce that we passed the budget yesterday, and that'll be sent on to the BCC for finalization later this month. But the first order of business, as we always try to do, is Citizen Communication. I'll call forward Mr. Les Poole.
Good morning. I know you've missed me as much as I've missed you.
Yeah, I was.
I haven't had a chance to listen to any of the audio of the budget hearings, but I'm getting lots of inquiries, and I myself am real curious how much is going to be in there for the roads, because if it's going to cost five, or eight, or 10, or 13 times as much to rebuild roads in the future, and I think those are pretty realistic numbers, I've built roads. We have what I consider to be an emergency. In fact, the roads, if anything qualifies as an emergency under the legal term, it's our roads. So hopefully, we'll see some momentum there, because I know the county's looking for a way to put something on the ballot soon. And we've got to do something. We can no longer kick the can down the road. That can was so beat up, that can was kicked so far down the road before you ever got here, that it's embarrassing. So I wish you well on that. Damascus has gotten quite interesting. As a Damascus property owner, one of the mantras from the mayor and Chris Hawes is that, "Let's disincorporate and go back to be a community. Let the county planning department do everything. Let the county handle it." I just saw here recently on many occasions where, of course, the county wants to grow to incorporate, the county encourages cities to be cities, and in spite of everything that's gone on in Damascus, if Damascus disincorporates, the problems don't go away. And Happy Valley will benefit short-term, but what happens between Happy Valley and Highway 26 in the future is going to be a mess, and you folks will be stuck with it, unless you can find a way to get out of Metro like Boring might be able to do. Speaking of Metro, you're going to start hearing more and more about a real serious effort to rein in Metro's authority over the counties and cities. They do some things right, but they have a track record with management of the growth boundary that is totally unacceptable, completely unacceptable. And I will close by saying, if you look at what's occurred in Damascus, if you look at what's going on in Stafford, if you know anything about the alleged oddly-named land use grand bargain, and how many times the legislators had to get involved in land use recently, you'd understand clearly that more authority needs to come back to local entities. We need more local control, and we don't need as much government as we have in terms of Metro attempting to sell a concept region-wide that has flaws and holes in it. It's time for that to change, it is so evident. And there are even whispers of that in Salem, because they're getting really tired of every session, more and more bills being introduced that are tweaks to fix one of the many, many, many examples of a systematic problem. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Les. And now, Commissioner Savis?
Well, thank you, Les, for your comments. You know, the first one you mentioned was the roads, and I'm happy to report that at least what's in the budget now, which we hope to approve here in a couple, few weeks here as a Board of County Commissioners, but there is another, an additional million of dollars that we, the Budget Committee has committed to, towards the roads. So that'll, with that multiplier of 10 to 1, 10, or 13 to 1, that'll be, that'll be a value. We need much more, however, to address the needs, but I'm pleased to report that. You're right on the local control issue, as far, to some degree. We had a nice discussion yesterday, you might want to listen to that one, too. But yesterday, we talked about land use, and I believe that, and it was even mentioned in the meeting this morning, that the county could do really a lot more. We need to prepare quickly to make our ask, long-term, for our reserves, our industrial lands, for so that people can actually work in Clackamas County, live and work in Clackamas County, and not have to drive farther for that. So we are working on that. I think there was a very appropriate comment, to some degree, truthful, that Counselor Colette made this morning, that was that Clackamas County needs to tell us what they want. And I think we do need to tell them what they want, and we just need to articulate that and make sure that it's in both a near-term and a long-term perspective.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, Les, I was going to talk about roads, and I was going to ask you a question. Yeah, this Budget Committee with five citizen members voted not unanimously to take a million dollars out of one pot and put it in another. So it's not any new money, so I just want the folks to know that the money that was taken out of our facilities fund, which some of us say, like myself, that is indeed an emergency fund, so if you don't see improvement at the fair, if you don't see improvement at other places in the county where there's a desperate need, it's on our roads. So we do have limited money that we can use. As far as land use, we've been fighting Metro and asking for things in the legislature everything since I've been here, and the issue does not go away, and you are spot-on with Metro. My question for you is, you say we need to go out for an ask. Are you willing to pay more in fees, taxes, or some type of increase to help pay for that? And how much a year would that be? Are you willing to pay to put our roads in a fair condition?
That's a great question, and I'll try and answer it.
Succinctly.
Obviously, the answer would be yes.
How much?
There's the asterisk.
Well, you need to tell me a number, because, you know, I have, we have advocates all over the place.
Right, right. First of all, I would spend a day or two researching it, and I would give you a real serious answer if you wish.
Would you be willing to pay $10? No, Les?
Would I be willing to spend $10 a month?
Yeah, $120 a year. Would you spend that?
I would spend that if I knew where it was going. And if too much of it went to an overhead administration, no offense to the planners, and not enough went to direct repairs of the road, there's my asterisk. And we all understand that you've got a limited amount of money that can go to roads. I don't know how much of the county's budget is property taxes that are dedicated to things other than roads.
All of it.
And how much money comes in, how many grants, how many things we qualify for, how much money comes in from gas tax?
Okay, I thought I was going to cut you short. This is the deal. This is the deal I'm asking the que-- look, 100% of the county's general fund budget is not dedicated to roads, just so you know. We are prohibited from doing so by Oregon revised statutes. Now, any money we pull out of another fund is really funny business, and I hope that what we did will stand and make it through the test, the legal test that we need to do. Our hands are tied so much on road funds. We get gas tax, yes, people say, "I pay enough gas tax, where does it go?" Well, what you see out there now is where it goes. We have federal funds, the Highway Transportation Act, it does not look like Congress is moving forward on that. They are stuck in the system as well. So I don't know if our state legislature is going to come up with anything, I seriously doubt it. So what do we do here for our own roads? That is the question.
Commissioner Bernard?
I just, the mil, the extra million, it'll be interesting to show the citizens what an extra million does. So I look forward to that. But, I mean, your comment about the legislature tired of fixing the mistakes that Metro makes, I don't know, but if you read, saw the stuff yesterday where they're fixing all the bills they just signed weeks ago, so it's certainly not just a Metro problem. It's, you know, the legislature has a lot of problems with addressing the mistakes they make and have to fix a week later. You know, our justice court lost a whole bunch of money one year because of this legislative change, and they had to come back next year and fix it, and they're coming back this year to fix what they fixed, and then it's just a constant thing. But, you know, lots of times when you have a lobbying group trying to push bills through, they get through without being really the clean bill that the citizens should expect and insist come out of Salem. And it's also true with Metro.
Yeah, I know I'm over the time here, but given that we're not real crowded or backed up, a couple of things. First of all, Tudy, you know, I hear where you're coming from, and I certainly would strongly consider supporting something. And $10 a month, if there was a way of not having an increase in the future without a vote, or $10 a month for something that isn't going to turn into $40 a month and 50, that, those are the kind of asterisks I put on my answer.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because of what happened in the past.
Right. And interestingly, Mr. Bernard's comment is correct, and one thing that they're trying to address now is that it looks like Senate Bill 324, the Clean Fuels Legislation, is now being used as a bargaining chip, and now that Clean Fuels Legislation is being questioned. And I don't want to toot my horn, but I don't know how many times I've written and talked about the correlation and the tremendous amount of money that we're investing in the climate-smart strategy, which is nothing more than a pie-in-the-sky strategy, and that the Clean Fuels is part of it. And that is all a Metro problem, that the state is mismanaged. So I don't know where that's going, but I appreciate the extra time, and let's just keep pounding away, the clock's ticking.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we don't, we don't have very many people in our audience, but there is one particular person and his mother that I'm going to call forward here, just because this is part of your learning process, but there's a young scout in the audience, so I'd ask you both to come forward, so we can ask you some questions. We should probably clarify whether you're a Boy Scout or a Cub Scout, because I can't tell from the insignias. Why don't you give us your name and the area you're from, and tell us why you're here today?
My name is Jake Edson, and I am a Boy Scout. And I'm here today because I'm working on my citizenship and the community merit badge.
Citizenship, so you have to attend boring, I mean, exciting meetings like this, right?
Right.
Okay. And so you are working, like many of you are, towards your Eagle Scout status, I assume, right?
Yeah.
And that's usually a goal achieved, I think, 15 through 18, is that about right?
Yeah, about right.
Depending upon your progress and how much time you put into it. And why don't you give us your name, too?
I'm Kelly Edson, his mom.
Kelly, nice to meet you. Well, a couple Commissioners are going to say a couple things, and then if you'll just hang there, we've got a lady here that's going to take a photograph, that we'll be able to transfer you if you give your email address, so that you can brag, "Hey, I stood with the big people," right? So Commissioner Bernard?
So I hope I have an opportunity. I write letters to all the Eagle Scouts when they get it in Clackamas County, so I look forward to writing you a letter of congratulations. But I, I'm interested in, you know, when we talk about roads, we're talking about your future, not ours, the deterioration of roads. So how much would you be willing to pay for roads?
Oh.
Out of your--
Oh, man, his allowance?
His allowance?
Your allowance, or you're not that far away from having a job.
Oh, don't put the kid on this.
What would you pay for roads? Tell me.
We're going to let you go get by on that one, and then I want to go--
Bob 95.
Commissioner Savis?
I wasn't going to ask that question, but it was actually the same topic, so I just thought I would ask, you know, the young gentleman here or his mother, you know, what your assessment is of the road condition in Clackamas County?
I don't know, yeah, there are lots of potholes, and we are here in Oregon City. So I do see some improvements being made here and there, but, yeah, they could be a little bit better.
I just think the, your input today and your involvement in this is something that maybe you could talk about as far as your graduating, your next step, so part of your civic involvement, so I'm really glad to see you here today.
All right, let's, let's go down real quick, Commissioners, and get a photograph.
I don't know, somehow I'm compelled to ask Commissioner Bernard how much he would spend per month on roads.
Yeah. The, people should note that there is a website called theroadeahead.us. At that site, we can, we certainly explain our plight, our situation, and the future. There will be, as part of our campaign in November, to send asks or ask to the public, there will be an explanation about what this money will do for you directly. You know, a lot of people say, "I'm just concerned where the money goes." We just went through the budget process for DTD, Department of Transportation Development. In there, everything is spelled out, everything, as to where your money currently goes. Because a road is a road, and the pavement is a pavement, but there's striping, there's shoulder work, there's ditch work, there's vegetation work. There's guardrails, signs, a lot more to a road than just the pavement.
Yeah, animal.
And there's, there's road carnage, yes, and a lot of other problems along there. But the, but the point of the matter is, what we will put forward to the people is what you will get for your money. And we'll try to touch all the most important areas of the county that really need that and spread it, so that everybody will feel some good effect from the passage of these measures or measure. So anyway, that aside, again, this is a short agenda, our young Boy Scout picked a good meeting, because it's going to be fairly short. It is now time for the Consent Agenda. I'll ask the Clerk to read the Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, the Consent Agenda. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Happy Valley for Planning, Engineering, and Building Permitting Services for portions of the Eagle Landing Development, and approval of a contract with Knife River Corporation Northwest for the Forest Foster Road Paving Project Package. Under Finance, we have approval of a contract with Brockham and Jaeger for the Silver Oaks Building Tenant Improvement Project. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to apply for a U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community-Oriented Policing Services, Anti-Heroin Task Force Program Grant, and also a request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to apply for a U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community-Oriented Policing Services for the Anti-Meth Program Grant, and approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon, TRIMET, and the City of Portland and Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for Transit Police Services. Under Community Corrections, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Wilsonville to provide work crew services for fiscal year 2015, 2016, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of West Lynn to provide work crew services for fiscal year 2015, 2016, and approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County Service District Number One and Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County to provide work crew services for fiscal year 2015, 2016. Under the County Administration, we have approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and Portland State University's Mark O. Hatfield School of Government for the Hatfield Resident Fellows Program, and approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and Portland State University, Mark O. Hatfield School of Government for the Oregon Fellows Program. Under Water Environment Services, approval of a construction contract between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Stellar J. Corporation for the Kellogg Creek Water Pollution Control Plant Primary Clarifier Number Two Rebuild Project. And that concludes the Consent Agenda.
Commissioner Bernard?
Actually, after the motion, I was going to make a comment.
All right, so I'll ask for a motion.
I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Bernard?
Well, I've, there is a project in here which the ODOT's contributing 15, wait, is that, no, I've lost my, 1.5 million, and we're putting in $481,000, so that's a good, that's a good deal. On Foster Road, however, I didn't, I'm not even sure I knew it was in Clackamas County, it's just got to be the border.
Yeah.
It's got to be the border. The other, the other is a COPS program, which I don't know that COPS, when I was mayor, COPS was a big funder of community policing, and it went away for a while, but, you know, lately, community policing, you know, across the country has become more important, so there's more, a little bit more money directing towards those kind of programs, so it's great, and I appreciate the sheriff applying for those funds.
Great. Any further discussion, or anybody want to pull any of the items from the Consent Agenda? All right, we'll call for the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 5-0. And now, our very exciting Chief Budget Officer, also known as our County Administrator, is going to advise us on a few things.
And I'm also known as your District Administrator as well.
That's true, many hats.
As I was admonished by County Council to remind the Budget Committees on, on Monday, so, uh, so, well, I've got some good news to share, and of course, you know, one of the things I get frequently that I like sharing are accolades regarding our Department of Transportation and Development that we get from local residents, and we received two just recently. The first we received was a, it's a really lovely thank-you card in the mail from a resident, Sherry Chanel, writing on behalf of the Spangler Road Homeowners Association, and she says this. She wants to thank the department for the fine work you do in keeping up on the road maintenance in Clackamas County. I know you're working with a huge budget deficit and under difficult circumstances, and we want you to know that we think you're doing a great job. Please know that you are thought of warmly by many drivers and well-appreciated.
Wow.
That's a nice statement.
So nice.
To hear from her. We ought to get back to her and introduce her to our website information about our road maintenance program, so. And the second accolade comes from an Alicia Hamilton, who emailed our DTD Department to thank them for safety improvements made on Webster Road in front of the Alder Creek Middle School. Ms. Hamilton writes, "The 20 mile-per-hour school zone flashing signs, in addition to the 'your speed is' signs, has made a huge improvement in the safety of our children as well as for the cars traveling in this area. Please know how much we appreciate the county's efforts to address this important issue." So another very nice set of words. I want to thank Ms. Hamilton for sharing that with us, but I especially want to thank our staff in our Transportation and Development Department for the fine work they do and the leadership given to the department with Barbara Cartmill as the director there. I am also proud to report that earlier this week, our very own Finance Director, Mark Gonzalez, was named President-elect of the Government Finance Officers Association, which is the largest public finance professionals association in the country, and it's actually got an international presence. The Association advances the needs of the public by promoting professional management of government resources by developing sound fiscal strategies. Now, Mark will assume his role as President next spring, and he will be the fifth President from Oregon since 1994, so way to go, Mark. Great stuff, so.
Congratulations, Mark.
Nice.
And then finally, I want to thank you, Commissioners, and our nearly 50 citizens, 50 citizens, who sit on our various Budget Committees for investing the time, diligence, and thoughtfulness that's necessary to produce budget recommendations for the coming fiscal year. And, you know, we completed our Budget Committee work yesterday, and I'm proud to say to you and your fellow Budget Committee members that we've produced what I think's an outstanding budget, and I think it will serve the citizens of Clackamas County well during the coming year. I want to especially thank our staff throughout the county organization for all the work that they did in supporting the work of these 10 Budget Committees. I, you know, I am reminded of advice I received when I was studying public administration in graduate school. It was from a book called The Implementation Game by a guy by the name Eugene Bardock. And I haven't got the quote exactly, but the, I remembered the words all these years since grad school, and he basically says this, that "The likelihood of success is inversely proportional to the number of decisions needed to make get things get done." And, you know, when you think about how many decisions we need to undertake in order to secure a successful result on the budget involving 10 Budget Committees and nearly two dozen county departments, I think that's a really remarkable achievement. And you deserve to be proud of yourselves for what you've accomplished over the course of the past couple of weeks. Of course, what's left for this Board in your various capacities is to take final action on the budgets on June 25th, and citizens are invited, welcome, and encouraged to attend to express their views and perspectives. The entire county budget with the associated presentation materials and soon-to-be-uploaded audio recordings are available on the county website, so I'll look forward to that, and look forward to being able to complete the budget on June the 25th. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. And now, it's time for Commissioner Communication, and I'll start with Commissioner Bernard.
Oh, you're going to put it up on the screen. So I suggested last time that perhaps we show off some of our dogs at the dog shelter, and Mary suggested that maybe I make a voice, a dog voice, but I'm not going to do that, because I promised Paul I wouldn't use my dog app to do a voice. So, and dogs, since dogs can't talk, this particular dog has a very nice handwriting style. So I'm going to read what George says. Says, "Hello, I've been named George, and I love it. That name fits a confident, outgoing guy like me. I will always be at the front door to greet our, all our visit, all the visitors." Hopefully, he reads better than I do. "My small stature is balanced by my big personality, so please come by and meet me, and we'll be best friends right away." me, and we'll be best friends right away." So please, uh, you know, I have a dog from the dog shelter, a great dog, uh, I actually have two dogs from the dog shelter, so it, they're both great dogs, and for more information about George and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at (503) 655-8628, or visit their, them on the website, and there's pictures, at www.clackamas.us/dogs. So, uh, when you're thinking about a dog, think about Clackamas County's Dog Shelter. Um, the, the, one of the things we're talking about is road funding. One of the, I, I think that we, we should make clear that while the projects that might be funded, or the voters support that, are packages based on, uh, preserving the quality of roads now, rather than letting them decay and become much more expensive. So, you know, some communities where the roads have been less maintained may get more than road, than other areas, uh, so it's more based on need rather than whether it's in your neighborhood or you complain more than the other. Uh, the budget was great. I, I thought it was, uh, we're doing some different stuff, uh, um, the, my car was weighed down every day with piles of paperwork, and could barely make it up the elevator with it, because the elevator was straining, but, um, it's a lot of hard work, um, and I just gotta say, you know, the attendance is extremely poor, and by the way, I, the, this is the best way to influence the process. We had NAMI there, and they were able to influence us, and, uh, I'd say thanks to their, uh, them showing up, they've got, they got something. Wilsonville Road, while it wasn't necessarily supported, at least we know more about it, and we can work towards making sure that our transportation department gets there. Um, I would say that, uh, you know, while not everything was funded, we didn't have that much money to spend, ex, I'd say, money that hasn't been purposely, I mean, identified specific projects. We were able to apply those where we, as a board, uh, of five and five, five commissioners and five citizens, were able to identify those things that we thought would have the greatest return on investment. So it was, it was a good process, and it was extremely tiring, and I'm glad, glad we're done. And Don, last year, introduced the DOT system, and, and I thought the DOT system worked out well this time. Uh, we had some very identifiable lines on what was a priority. Also, I wanna congratulate you. You were very successful during the budget process.
I heard, were ecstatic, thank you.
Well, you guys do a great job, and, and, uh, uh, you know, I, all our departments do a great job, and, um, we, we invest where we can and not where we, we don't think it would provide the best return. Juvenile, and for me, and I know that for John, and youth and families are the most important, we get the greatest return, and I think it's even greater than pavement on the road. Uh, so, that's the challenge we, we have to make, but I also look forward to that extra million to say to citizens, "Well, this is what a million dollars will do for you." It is one point five million, but this is what a million did, will do for you extra this year, this is what half a million did last year, and so people can say, "Wow, that's great," and, um, I think we should specifically identify those roads that get that pavement so people can maybe take a drive out there. So, uh, thank you also to the commission and to the, the citizen members, uh, for dedicating a lot of time in, in what is a great budget. This is, um, let me see. This is my, uh, fourteenth year doing government budgets. Uh, I'd say it's not the best, I'd say last year was the best, this year was, was not quite as fun as last year, and this, and I'll tell you why, 'cause there was money this year. Last year, there was money, and the, the hardest process on a budget is when there's money. The easiest one is when there isn't. So, uh, and it's not that we raised taxes or anything, it's just that the economy's turned around, so, uh, I hope we still have hard budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Well, indeed, it was a, uh, robust budget process, and, um, you know, I think the issue of roads is probably the topic of the day here, obviously. Um, I, I, I want, yeah, I know Commissioner Smith's concerns about whether or not it will stand up, uh, I think legal counsel opine that, you know, restoring the funding and the funding streams back from the general fund through offsets, it, you know, is, will, will stand up, and we can actually invest even more money. Um, so I'm not really so worried about the investment, uh, and restoring that funding back, and the one point five million dollars that we will be investing, um, is, got a multiplier of about, according to staff, about fifteen million dollars back on the road surface, and, and it was a robust discussion we had, and, and yes, the, the citizen members did unanimously support that, um, but at the end of the day, it wasn't unanimous, but again, I know we have different opinions about how we get the roads, but I, I thought doing something now is more important than hoping that the citizens, um, will support ultimately some kind of a road funding, uh, measure. And I agree with Commissioner Bernard, it does, it does need to be a package, um, uh, and what that package looks like, and what's in the package, of course, is how that, how the citizens respond to that, how they, how that resonates with them is something that we, we, it's up to us to craft, and, um, even the idea of a sunset, to make sure that, uh, I think Mr. Poole mentioned that, how do we, how do we make sure that it actually is being spent on the roads, and I think by sunsetting it, um, to some degree, that we have an opportunity to prove that we're spending those dollars, and, um, if we do it successfully and we live up to what we said, the voters will eventually renew that. So I think that's a expectation and a control measure to make sure that government's delivering on what they said they re, they would do. Um, uh, in the, today's consent agenda is a few IGAs, and IGAs stands for intergovernmental agreement, and that's when governments work together and work with governments. I've been kinda making the pitch about cooperation amongst governments, and, and when that happens, um, the ci, the citizens in the county and the cities all save money, uh, and that includes the districts. I just wanna, uh, I've been reading through several years of minutes on, on sewer stuff, and, uh, just recently, I've got, uh, another batch of six years of minutes I've been reading, and it's fascinating discussion, uh, just fascinating, and, um, history does repeat itself, and, uh, I, I just wanna say that, uh, cooperation and intergovernmental agreements and, and, uh, collaboration and working in good faith, uh, really can deliver great results, and hopefully, we can continue to do that in the future. That's what I have for today, and again, I wanna thank my colleagues for a, uh, a good, good discussions at the budget, uh, on many topics that we deliver, so, and staff as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. We all have something to say about the budget and other things. A very long time ago, a wise investor told me that too do you need to prepare for the bad times, because the good times will take care of themselves financially. I think we've prepared a budget that will sustain us, and we're guarding against an eventual downturn, could be four, five years or longer. I hope it doesn't happen, but I think some of us were really mindful of that. With five, uh, really talented citizen members, you know, they are accountants, and they're longtime people who have done budgets, business people, I was very happy with the input that they offered. I think probably this is the best, uh, citizen, uh, participation in the budgets that we've had in a very long time. A lot of, um, thought, heart, and, um, comments, we didn't always agree, but we had our heart in it, and I think we came up with a good budget, like, uh, Don said. We were able to increase the small grants program, and we were able to do that off the bat, and I insisted that we could take one of the policy packages off the wall, and we put additional fifty thousand dollars to our small grants program, upping it to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And if you wanna see, um, where that money goes, it's online, it's some of the most heartfelt, uh, heart-tugging resources it goes to. It goes for food, for our shelters, uh, freezers, a refrigerator to store food throughout the county, and it's very, used for very basic needs, uh, where organizations, or churches, or schools, where other things have fallen through the cracks, and we're able to, um, to, uh, add back what is important to that. I'm also very happy that, um, our Budget Director, Don, placed a line item in the budget for facility maintenance, and that was a one-point-four-million-dollar set aside so we could plan on what facilities we're going to upgrade and keep to code. You know, we have facilities that, owned by Clackamas County, that are not up to code, that are sometimes in dangerous c- condition, that, for instance, Parrot Creek, where students go to for rehabilitation, or the fairgrounds, where hundreds, if not thousands, of people congregate to every August. And the roads isn't our only emergency. Unfortunately, the extra money that we put into roads came out of that fund, which was then funded by, uh, the general fund, which was property taxes. So whereas we're gonna be able to prove to the citizens, we have another million dollars for roads, I personally think it's a drop in the bucket. So whenever you see, in my opinion, a new monies come in, they're the same old monies, we're just shifting them around. On Friday, I had the most wonderful opportunity to speak to a crowded people down at the Blue Hair and Paper Mill, which has now been designated as the Willamette Falls Heritage Project, where that will be transformed one day into a wonderful, thriving, uh, community commerce center producing jobs. Uh, we have entered, Clackamas County has entered into an agreement with, uh, three, two other, three other, um, governing bodies, Metro, Oregon City, and the State of Oregon, and Clackamas County have joined together to make that a wonderful place. Construction of a walkway will begin probably next year. Uh, they have chosen a designer, we're moving ahead. We were able to, uh, have Kate Brown, our governor, come out this weekend. She toured the site for the first time, um, was very supportive of the project, and we had a huge crowd, it was wonderful, it was one of our hot days, but I look forward to all of us working together for the good. On Saturday, I, um, had an opportunity to speak at the Columbia, uh, the Coastal Conversation, the Coastal Conservation Association of Oregon, a fish organization, down at, uh, Clackamas Park in, on the Willamette River, to talk about the sea lions. As you know, the stellar in California, sea lions are wiping out our fish population. The reason they're able to do that is because they are an endangered species. However, the fish they are eating and decimating are also an endangered species. And Congressman Kurt Schrader, along with co-sponsor Jamie Herrera Butler, has dropped a bill, H.R. five-sixty-four, and what that does, it amends the Endangered Species Act to give local governments and regions the authority to deal with sea lions in their area. Mr. Schrader has asked that all of us, and I'm gonna, and I said that the county commission would do this on behalf of you guys, and you can decide, if we would contact our Oregon delegation, our Washington delegation to the Congress, and our Idaho delegation, to ask them not only to support this bill, but to sign on as sponsors. I think this is a wonderful bipartisan measure, and it's a very big problem. It's a big problem up in Seattle, it's a big problem on our southern Oregon coast, on the Columbia River, on, uh, Willamette Falls, and I look forward to us, uh, doing that. It was a great talk, we had some senators, we had ODFW officials there, and we also had, uh, which I think is very important, the Columbia River Treaty Tribes there, and they talked, um, most succinctly about how important the salmon is to their culture and livelihood, and how that salmon has kept them alive, and how they take care of the problem, which is not how we would take care of the problem, and it was very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Well, I guess we're all gonna talk a little bit about the budget. Um, I was very happy with the process this year, and again, kudos to our citizens group. They are truly one of the most involved, uh, budget committee members that I've ever worked with, and they have added such capacity, uh, and thoughtfulness to this process because of their backgrounds in, in budgeting, and their backgrounds in, uh, being certified public accountants, uh, in, in more than one way, so, um, again, it was a privilege to work with those folks. Uh, I particularly was happy, uh, with the budget, because we have continued our commitment to veterans, uh, and particularly, uh, working with homeless veterans on two fronts. Um, we did support a policy option package, uh, dealing with homeless veterans, that we hope our human services folks will, uh, implement forthwith, as well as continuing to do our outreach, uh, to find those veterans who are homeless, because we believe since they have served us, uh, we need to serve, um, serve them as well with, uh, with the benefits that they have earned, because they are our heroes, they are our heroines, uh, who, who really make sure that we're safe and sound, so I'm very pleased with the budget with that. Also, we've supported, uh, mental health, uh, investments that I think are going to be very important for the entire area, to make sure that folks that are having issues aren't going to be ending up in jail, but will also, will have a safe place, uh, to go. Uh, I thought that was another really good thing to emphasize. We also did a great job with, um, heritage, uh, the arts, and tourism in Clackamas County. Tourism is a big economic driver here, and we continue to support those folks in their efforts to make sure that when people come to visit Oregon, they're actually gonna come to visit Clackamas County, the mountain, our rivers, hike, be here, and, uh, hopefully spend their dollars here, having a lot of fun in Clackamas County. Um, the other thing that we did that I was very happy about in our budget is we did prioritize, uh, services to children, and those are younger children with, uh, healthy families, uh, as well as, um, the, the Children's Center, I know that we, we continue to give them, uh, dollars, and Clackamas Women's Services as well, in terms of supporting the Family Justice Center. Um, so I think that we are using our resources wis- wisely for the health and prosperity of our citizens here in the county. I also had an opportunity, uh, with Commissioner Smith, to attend the Willamette Falls event, and I had an opportunity to walk with Governor Brown as she visited the site for the first time, and actually got to feel the spray of, um, of our beautiful Willamette Falls on her face, and also a dear friend was there, who we all know as Governor Barbara Roberts was also there, and she has been a friend and mentor to me for years, so it was wonderful to see both of those women of achievement, uh, and grace and style, who are leaders and continue to be leaders, uh, in our county and in our state. Um, on Saturday, I spent my time at the Oregon City Farmers Market for a few hours and got the best strawberries hoods, actually, which are hard to find, okay? So if you want hoods, try the Oregon City's Farmers Market this Saturday. I actually, I'm gonna be going to Lake Assiswigo one this Saturday myself. I keep traveling around to different farmers markets, and of course, remember the Milwaukee Farmers Market on Sunday is another one of, of the places that I enjoy going to to get my fresh fruits and vegetables, and to support our local farmers and the food shed. Basically, what is happening tomorrow is the Pacific Northwest Defense Coalition is hosting its Northwest Military Employers Event, and essentially, what that is going to be doing is to be pulling together all the employers in the area who support our veterans and who hire veterans, uh, to give them an opportunity. One of the speakers, uh, will be General Hawkinson, uh, will be there, uh, and I'm there in my capacity as a member of the Military Families Scholarship Foundation, where we are beginning to boost our fundraising, so Clackamas Community College has the dollars not only to send their, uh, veterans to college, but also, uh, family members of those veterans. So we're gonna be present there tomorrow. It should be a really great event and a great day, and I head on to the Boring Business Alliance, where I'll be talking about the rural economic development opportunities for boring, and then Estacada, tomorrow night, is having the ribbon cutting on their new street scape, and I'm glad I'll be attending that as well. So, with that, Chair, I'll hand it over to you, except with one last remark. We are still working on the women's pay equity, and I believe we're gonna be having a, uh, I guess I'm looking at my, our administrative hair Tuesday, we're gonna be having a, a work session dealing with that very issue, so, thank you for that.
Thank you. You know, uh, my comment on, on the budget, I got it, yeah, thanks. Uh, my comment on the budget, uh, process is, is as follows. One, thank you, Mr. Krupp, for, uh, a great process. Uh, thank you to Diane Padilla, who did yeoman's work. This poor woman, because of the requests of us, and that means all of us on the Budget Committee, she sometimes worked till midnight and after, aggregating mass quantities of, uh, paper pulp to hand out to us the next day, and did an outstanding job of that. One of the things that was really apparent is that, you know, oftentimes, we, people are critical of government and their budget and their spending. critical of government and their budget and their spending. Isn't it interesting that really, nobody showed? When it was public testimony time, there was only a group of people, and I think there was about nine of them, that said a few words, and they donned the T-shirts for NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness. And they said, "We need the money restored to us that was formerly taken away because of budgetary constraints in previous years." They had an impact, and I'm saying this because, you know, oftentimes, people think, well, it's already done. Don't even show up. They've already made up their minds. That is patently not true. I look back on our process in the last couple of years when we passed the dog barking ordinance, and some people who were reading sled dogs came along and said, "Wait a minute. These dogs bark more than normal. Give us some extra time, double that time, to a half an hour, I think it is." I know that's a long time for dogs to bark. Normally, it's 15 minutes. And so we did that, because normally, these people, by the way, live in the country, further away from people. But if you show up and you testify, you can make a difference. I'm looking at Les Poole, who testifies rather regularly, and he has an influence over us. I don't want to make his head big by telling him what influence that is, but it does make a difference to show up and to remonstrate or compliment us, as you wish. Probably some of the most important meetings we can attend this time of year, especially during a legislative session, is coming Monday through the Association of Oregon Counties. They are a tremendous lobbying arm. They do a lot of stuff for our county and for all the counties in the state of Oregon. But when we go down there, including this next Monday, both legislative, governance, and water, transportation, almost everything is addressed, and they go forward advocating for us aggregately. Again, this is on a majority basis, we vote, and do a fantastic job in influencing legislation. This particular week is a critical week for many bills, and they will live and die in great amounts, in abundance, abundant amounts here very soon this week. We had quite a study session yesterday on legislative land use asks that are going forward. For anybody interested in that, they can listen to our one hour, less than one hour, barely, meeting that occurred yesterday, audio but not visual. Also, I want to have Mary put up the town hall reminders, because one is coming up here very soon. We try to go out in the community, in this case, four times a year, and we have themes this year, i.e., the theme is, the three remaining is, that will be in Milwaukee High School, and the theme is build a strong infrastructure. Now, infrastructure costs money, and so, you know, I'm sure people will give us their opinion about how we should spend money regardless of not showing up at the Budget Committee meetings. The next one you will note is Monday, in Canby, at the Canby Fairgrounds to ensure safe and healthy communities, and also the topic honor, utilize, and promote and invest in our national resources in Welch's later on in October. You will note that these tie directly into our strategic plan and the goals of this commission, and so we encourage people to come and talk about these subjects. I was also, again, emphasized NAMI, because they showed up, and oftentimes, people just don't show up here, so I emphasize if you want us to change our ways, or if you want to give us a compliment, by the way, you know, please come in and tell us. Don't be afraid to contact our staff as well, especially at the BCC. We have incredible staff who support us. Mr. Krupp's door is always open to comments and controversy. But I appreciate everybody showing up here today. And one last thing I want to mention. I attended something kind of exciting, because I grew up in Oak Grove, and Oak Grove is kind of still the same as far as the environment off of McLaughlin, but McLaughlin has changed a great deal. So two nights ago, Commissioner Savis and I attended a kickoff signing event to bring uniform lighting along McLaughlin. I think that would be fantastic. The signages, the runaway crazy signs that were put out there without permissions has really been curtailed. McLaughlin is looking better, and I can't think of anything better than for the businesses along McLaughlin to agree to share in the cost of uniform lighting. It promotes safety. It certainly enhances the area, i.e., uniformity brings some kind of a beauty to it, too. So I emphasize to anybody who owns properties along McLaughlin or solicits businesses along there to encourage them to sign up to this new lighting district. It'll take a little while to get going, but if they get the, they have 176 businesses, they need really 50-plus, 50 percent, plus one person, one business, in order to get that implemented, so I recommend that. So there being no further business before the commission, this business meeting today. Ladies and gentlemen, have a very hot and wonderful weekend. This meeting's adjourned.